Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We want to welcome everyone to today's meeting, regular meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council, and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Here.
Mayor Budge.
Here. Stacy, would you read the TV playback announcement, please?
This meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Wednesday, October 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Monday, October 22nd at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Stacy. And we do that because we want to also welcome all of the people who will be watching on cable or on the Internet. And we want to let everyone know that there is an opportunity for public comment tonight. And we have speaker cards at the back of the room, so anybody who wants to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda can fill out a speaker card and turn it into the city clerk. We're going to begin our meeting, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance and with an invocation. Tonight's invocation is being brought by some very special people. The principal at St. John Vianney, Ms. Amy Hale, and the student government president, Charles Sander, from St. John Vianney. And, excuse me, so after our Pledge of Allegiance, we would invite you to remain standing for the invocation. Our Pledge of Allegiance tonight is going to be led by Dr. Sarah Coligan, who is our superintendent at Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. So if we'll all stand. Please join me in honoring our flag. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, God of the inner light, come to us this evening, enlighten our minds, that our lives may rise to you in the act of praise of this evening's duties. Lord, bless this time of togetherness. May your light stream forth into the work before us, so that we may truly see you in all that we do. May all things work together for good. May all that is discussed be blessed. Allow us the grace to make your light known to the Rancho Cordova community. A reading from Mark, Chapter 4, verses 30 through 32. He said, "To what shall we compare the kingdom of God, or what parable can we use for it? It is like a mustard seed, that when sown in the ground is the smallest of all the seeds on earth. But once it is sown, it springs up and becomes the largest of plants, and puts forth large branches, so that the birds of the sky can dwell in its shade."
A prayer for the long view. It helps now and then to step back and take a long view. The kingdom is not only beyond our efforts, it is even beyond our vision. We accomplish in our lifetime only a thin fraction of the magnificent enterprise that is God's work. Nothing we do is complete, which is a way of saying that the kingdom always lies beyond us. No statement says all that could be said. No prayer fully expresses our faith. No confession brings perfection. No pastoral visit brings wholeness. And no program accomplishes the church's mission. No set of goals and objectives includes everything. It may be incomplete, but it is a beginning, a step along the way, an opportunity for the Lord's grace to enter and do the rest. We may never see the end results, but that is the difference between the master builder and the worker. We are the workers, not master builders, ministers, or messias. We are prophets of a future not our own. That is what we are about. We plant the seeds that one day will grow. We water seeds already planted, knowing that they hold future promise. We lay foundations that will need further development. We provide yeast that produces far beyond our capabilities. We cannot do everything, and there is a sense of liberation in realizing that. This enables us to do something, and to do it very well. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you both. Please be seated. I would only comment that in Rancho Cordova, we have always tried to ensure that our city will be as good to live in, in 100 years, as it is today. Taking that long view can be a very important talent to learn. Thank you very much. We will now have presentations, and we're going to reorder our presentations a little bit. And my colleague David is going to recognize DataKate as one of the Sacramento County Sustainable Business Awards.
Is this on? It is? And you must be Ed.
I am Ed.
Ed LaFrance.
Got my name on it.
All right. Well, I have a proclamation here that is honoring DataKate Inc. for the 2018 Sustainable Business of the Year. I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Rancho Cordova is honored to recognize DataKate as a recent recipient of the 2018 Sustainable Business of the Year, hosted by the Sacramento Area Sustainable Business Program. And whereas DataKate is a full-service technology partner dedicated to providing secure, reliable, high-available Internet solutions, I think most of us could use those, to clients with excellent service and support located within Rancho Cordova, California. And whereas by a dedicated team of professionals that understand what it means to build, maintain, and employ comprehensive Internet solutions. And whereas DataKate replaced all fluorescent tube lighting in office spaces and in the data center suite with LED-based drop-in replacements, resulting in an immediate 46% reduction in energy consumption for lighting. And whereas DataKate is currently engaged in replacing all wall switch lighting controls in its office and data center suite with automatic sensors to create lighted pathways with auto shut-off, further reducing power usage for lighting. And whereas DataKate replaced spindle drive technology in its client data storage arrays with highly efficient SSD storage technology. And now, therefore be it resolved, the city council of the city of Rancho Cordova expresses its sincere appreciation to DataKate for being a top performer in our community and for implementing outstanding achievements in energy conservation. And witness thereof, our mayor has signed her signature and affixed a seal for this proclamation. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
If you want to tell us a little bit about DataKate and about your sustainability efforts, that would be great.
All these mics are hot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right between them, you're fine.
Thank you very much for this proclamation. It's very much appreciated. Thank you to city management and city council for this. Very detailed. There's a lot of things on here that we did. I think one thing that we did, I'd like to mention that is not on here, is we worked in conjunction with SMUD. This was about a year or so ago. And we replaced, for the most part, replaced our powered air conditioning with a passive type of air conditioning that's highly efficient and uses 90% less power than conventional crack or cooling and, you know, powered compressor air conditioning. For our data center, that's a big deal, because, as you can imagine, with all those servers, putting off a lot of heat in one big room, we use a lot of air conditioning. So that's saving many hundreds of kilowatts of air conditioning power month after month. And that was just one of the things we did. Being green is not just smart for the environment, it's good for your bottom line, too. So we consider it a win-win all around. And again, I want to thank everyone for this honor. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I use his data center, or we're trying to partner together. He's a great community member and really wants to get involved in the overall city. So thank you for coming in today and being such an amazing partner with the city.
Would you like a photo? Yeah.
I have a sneaky feeling, your conversation about passive AC is something we should all have at home.
There is actually a program for that. Everybody in? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you very much, you guys. I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay, we lost somebody. However, we now need to celebrate Councilmember Gatewood's birthday. And you all are perfectly welcome to sing happy birthday to him. I'm not going to be the one who leads it. So maybe Bob could lead.
All right. You ready? One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Garrett. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you for those amazing words. You sing amazing.
We could, yeah.
Now, the Pia de Resistance. Okay, in Folsom-Cordova, there was quite a turnover in principals this year, and so we have invited our principals to come and share themselves. Some of them are people that we know well, and some of them are people that we're meeting for the first time. And so what I would like to invite every one of you to come in line, taking turns, ladies and gentlemen, starting with Danny. And would you please tell us where you are now and where you were before?
Thank you for this opportunity. I am at Mitchell Middle School right now, the principal at Mitchell Middle School. And I was the principal at Cordova High for eight years, and a vice principal there for six years, and a teacher there for about 15 years. But it's great to be at the middle school now. It's a whole new world, and I'm getting used to that energy. There's a lot of energy with middle school kids that I'm not ready for, but I'm getting there.
And you're getting them all IB-aligned for International Bachelorate at Cordova.
Yes, we are. Yeah. That's something, we actually have kids coming in, want transferring for that reason. So they're coming over to us. Our enrollment's up to 908 kids now, so looking good.
Oh, my goodness.
That's great.
Danny, that's terrific. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dana Kerrigan, and I'm the new principal at Mills Middle School this year. Previously, I was the principal at Kinney High School, and the last two years, when Prospect was relocated there. And prior to that, I was an assistant principal at Cordova High for a number of years, and also one year at Mitchell. So I've been around in the Rancho area for about 14 years, and love it. Love it here, love the community, and super happy to be at middle school again. But as Dan mentioned, it's a little bit of an adjustment. They're very loud, and they run.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is John Bliss, and I'm the new principal at Cordova Gardens Elementary. Prior to this, I was a teacher at Cordova High School for 10 years. I taught science with Mr. Anklum. Actually, he hired me. After that, I was a vice principal at Folsom High for six years, and then I was principal at Folsom Middle School for four years. And then I kind of had my homecoming, and I'm back in Rancho Cordova, at Cordova Gardens Elementary. Thank you.
Wonderful. We're pleased to have you. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I am Jessica Hutchinson. I am now the principal at Rancho Cordova Elementary School. Prior to this, I was at Cordova Villa for the last five years. And when Cordova Lane was shut down, Rancho Cordova Elementary was the first school I was sent to to teach at, so it's homecoming for me as well, to be back at Rancho Cordova Elementary. And thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Lynn Bludgeon. I'm the assistant principal at Cordova Meadows. Before that, I was the lead English teacher for the district for six years. Before that, I was at Cordova High. And before that, I was at Mills. So I know, like, everyone. And before that, I taught 5th grade in a different district, so now I'm back to my elementary roots. And I live in Rancho and love Rancho, too. So I'm happy to be here.
Wonderful. We're really pleased.
Good evening. I'm Jenna Shutey, and I am the new assistant principal at Mills Middle School. This is my 22nd year working for Folsom-Cordova in the Rancho Cordova area. Last year, and the two years prior, I was academic support coach, supporting teachers at the district level. And before that, I was at Mills Middle School as a teacher for about 18 years, also at Meadows and at Villa as a 6th grade teacher. So I'm also very happy to be in the Rancho area and welcome to be back at Mills.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Canaan Peterson. I'm the principal at White Rock Elementary School. Before White Rock, I was at Theodore Judah Elementary School for about seven years. And before that, I was principal at Natomas Station for about four and a half years. So I'm excited to be here.
Great. Welcome.
Welcome.
Good evening. I am Kim Chris-Jerson. I am also with Canaan at White Rock Elementary. Last year, I was at Cordova Villa as the assistant principal. I don't know if I told you, I'm the assistant principal with Canaan. And prior to that, I shared a half-year at Navigator Elementary as assistant principal and half-year at Cordova Villa. I have had the opportunity to teach in several schools in Rancho Cordova, Williamson, Cordova Lane, when it was still up and running, and Peter J. Shields. It's a great district. I love it. Love, love, love being at White Rock as well.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Joel Francisco, and I'm the assistant principal at Cordova High School. Prior to that, I served as an English language teacher and English language development teacher at Mills Middle School for 17 years. Prior to that, I was teaching in the Middle East. And then prior to that, I was in the United Nations Refugee Camp in Southeast Asia. I'm a transplant from the Philippines, and I just received my citizenship last month.
Party, congratulations.
This is perfect timing, because I feel like it's homecoming week. Good evening. My name is Richard Tapia, and I'm the principal at Cordova Villa Elementary School. This is my third school in the Cordova community. I was previously principal at Cordova Lane and Cordova Gardens, and previously have also been the principal at Empire Oak. So it's great to be home, and I appreciate all of the support the community and the city has provided us. So thank you very much for that. Rebecca?
Thank you. I'm his partner. I'm Rebecca Evers. I'm the assistant principal at Cordova Villa. It's my first year in the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. I'm in my 29th year in education, 20 of those years in administration. I started in Southern California, had an opportunity to move back to Shasta County, where I'm originally from, for a number of years. And then I've been down in the greater Sacramento area most currently, was up at Weimar Hills School in Meadow Vista. And I'm excited, I've been on for a few months, was a late hire in August, and I'm very excited to meet all of the folks in our community members, and just love being at the villa, especially with this guy and all of our parents and our kids.
We're really lucky to have her. It's great to have her. She's a great teammate, so.
Well, that's a good place to work, to meet everybody, that's for sure. Okay, thank you all very much for coming. We do have several people who were not able to make it tonight because of prior commitments, and they will be invited to come and introduce themselves to a future meeting. So Daniel, you want to get photographs? Okay? All righties, so we'll join you. What fun. So to whoever, Cyrus, whoever on staff that thought that idea, thank you all very much. We've never done that kind of thing before, and it really helps to meet all these people and understand what kind of background they're bringing to all of our little kids, at least in part of Rancho Cordova. So we are going to go into...
Madam Mayor, can I just make a quick comment? Some of the principals did have a conflict this evening, and they will be at the council meeting at the next meeting in November.
Okay, super. So now we're going to go into public comment. Remember that citizens wishing to speak have three minutes to come and tell us what's on your mind. And hopefully, everybody has completed a speaker card and submitted it to the city clerk. Remember also, please, that we cannot comment on items that are not on the agenda, but we would be happy to find you a staff person to explain your issue to, or if it's something that needs to be discussed in public, then to schedule it on a future agenda item, as a future agenda item. So Stacy, do we have anybody signed up?
At this time, we have two speaker cards. The first speaker is Helen Fredericks, and following Helen will be Anil.
Great.
Helen, if you'll introduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Helen Fredericks, and I live in Mobile Country Club, a senior mobile home park. I am vice president and acting president of the HOA. We recently received notice that our rent was going up either $50 or $40, depending on what they were paying now, going up to $7.49 a month. I believe Social Security is only going up 2.8%. All spaces pay the same price, depending on, doesn't depend on the size. At our September meeting, HOA meeting, the rent increase was the major topic. We've received, of course, some replies to the survey and following HUD guidelines. At current rate, we have 11% are paying under 30% for rent and utilities. 38% are moderately burdened, paying 30% to 49%, and 41% are severely burdened, paying 50% or more. Half of the 38%, or half of the moderately burdened, are in the 40% to 49%. And a third severely are paying 80% to 100%. We are unique in our situation because we own our homes. We pay taxes, we landscape around our homes. If something breaks in our homes, we repair it. The rent is for space only, utilities are extra. Many of us pay our utilities through Stores Realty, or Stores Management, who manages the property. Stores does give a 10% discount following strict guidelines to residents, but even with those strict guidelines, many are paying over 50% of their income. These are seniors and veterans. I asked a Stores representative about an upcoming rent raise. He said there would be one, excuse me. And when I said the rent increases were getting harder and harder for residents who are on fixed incomes, his reply to me was, "It's time for their kids and families to help them out. The investors want their money." I just want the city council's attention, to bring the city council's attention, that this is how seniors are being treated and pushed out of their homes by greedy investors that do not see human beings, they see only dollar signs. What's happening is that they're being forced into economic evictions. I thank you for your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Helen, thank you for coming tonight.
Anil, if you'll introduce yourself as well.
Anil Kondakrindi, resident of Sun Ridge Community, honorable mayor Lindabudge, council, city staff, and my fellow community members. This weekend, something amazing happened in our community. We celebrated Festival of Flowers, and it exceeded all our expectations this year. People came from Bay Area along with their families, even though they have their own festival in their cities, they want to experience in the city of Rancho Cordova. I want to bring it to the council's attention. This is really remarkable. Down in New Zealand, head of the state, Prime Minister of New Zealand, started participating in this Festival of Flowers, and she actively participated along with the community members, and she spent entire day in playing this Festival of Flowers. With that said, Rancho Cordova Municipal Government is the only government around the world outside of India who funded this festival. Being a small regional festival, too, now this festival became a global festival. Right now, across the world, there are eight different countries celebrating this festival. I'd like to thank you, on behalf of the entire community, to the city council, we're really grateful that you've given this opportunity to celebrate this festival right here in the city of Rancho Cordova. In front of this festival, we're expecting close to 2,200 people presented last night. And we also honored our fallen deputy, Mark Steisek, yesterday. And we also contributed to his memorial fund, a $1,000 check to him. Unfortunately, I couldn't meet Chief Whitman on the day. Today, I brought the actual check to present to Chief Whitman.
Chief, I think you have a presentation.
And I want to express to Chief, we really love your service. And when we lost the deputy, as a community, we came together and grieved, and our hearts are broken on that day. Actually, on the day, I came to speak on a public comment regarding the schools. When I hear that news, I couldn't speak on that day, and I took my public comment cards back from Stacy. Thank you, council. And I think very soon, this Festival of Flowers is going to find its path to play in White House. Thank you.
Anil, thank you very much. Wonderful. Anil, congratulations on such a successful event. And that's all?
That is all I have.
Does anybody want to change your mind and speak in public comment? Okay, then we will move into council reports and we'll start with Garrett.
You didn't want to start with me?
No, I'm sorry. We'll start with Donald.
I, I don't have to, but there's that little law that you gotta, you gotta report on travel that you take. So I will point out that I joined Megan and Megan from our staff in Brooklyn. I had to come a little bit late because we had to give somebody in here a review, which was great, of course. But it was an interesting few days. I think some of the highlights for me, we toured something called the DeKalb Market Hall and it was at City Point Development in Brooklyn. And what they, what they had done was it's mostly commercial and residential development. I think it's like 30 stories tall, but in the basement, before they actually landed at Trader Joe's, they opened up this market hall that's essentially 40 different small restaurants of all kinds of different ethnic food and sandwiches, all kinds of different things. And it's really a, like a thriving metropolis of, of food trucks essentially, but they all have their own little space. And it, it kind of reminds me of what, what we're getting out of KP International to a certain extent, but it seemed like a really fascinating assortment of eating places all kind of in one place and then off to the side is a Trader Joe's. And this is all in the basement of a large high rise that they had just built. The other thing that I thought was really fascinating was they repurposed, because they have all of these extra docks in, in the port of Brooklyn that they're not used, that they weren't using anymore and the wood pilings, I guess, are very expensive to maintain. And so one of the things that they decided to do was they took docks one through six in Brooklyn and turned them into public parks. All, a bunch of it was financed by the city and then a lot of, a lot of the programming is done by private donations and obviously they have hootles of people there to donate and to, and I guess at one point they were thinking about putting houses, build affordable housing on these piers and somebody explained to them, you know, even when they were building the park and they were trying to put like undulations and stuff into the, into the grassy areas and things like that, they actually had to use spray foam, like the expanding foam that you put into your house and then put, just put a little layer of dirt because any more weight than that could make, could cause it to collapse.
What?
They, they really can't hold a ton of weight.
They filled in the dock, so it's like a dry dock now?
Yeah, yeah. And so they have one whole area that's a huge pavilion, that's just basketball courts, ping pong tables and roller, like a roller rink and some other things like that. Then they have another area that's more of like a non-planned space, just open space with trees and things like that. Then they have a, a whole labyrinth parked for kids, they have a dog park, all of it out on the waterfront. And I will say, there was one interesting thing that they were talking about that made a lot of news there because of these basketball courts that are used really heavily. And I guess a big group of people that don't like the park being so busy suggested that they put tennis courts in instead. And the executive director who was talking to us afterwards said that he was asked on the news if that was a thinly veiled attempt at racism. And he goes, no, it wasn't thinly veiled at all. When you look at who was playing basketball there, right? So it was, it was a really fascinating trip. It was a, a great opportunity and I appreciate the city supporting myself and other staff members to go. I did want to commend the staff on the ribbon cutting for the Mather Trail, Mather Heritage Trail, excuse me. It looks fantastic. Albert, you and your team and Cyrus, you guys did a fantastic job. I want to say, a few of us went on the, I'm going to screw up the name, the Saratizit? 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 Tour, which was the tooling manufacturing company that we have here in town that was just completely fascinating and what they're going to be doing over the next couple of years to rearrange their space so that they can add, I, I want to see about 50% more jobs to what they're doing is just fantastic. But to learn about all of that over the last couple of weeks has been great. I know there were a bunch of other tours that were arranged by the Congressman, by Congressman Bera's office and some other folks in town. And then I want to commend our economic development team and our chamber, I saw Diane in here somewhere, there she is. And I'm not, was, was the Beryl District Event a chamber event or economic development? It was a chamber event, okay. Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. So it was a fantastic event. Got out to Pfister and I went to Gold River Distilling for the first time and got to taste a lot of their spirits. We did those first and then we slowed down with some beer at the end, but that seems like a, a great event that can only grow in the future. The one request I would have is figure out how we can get the brew bike to go up and down Sunrise. And I don't know if that means that we need to shut it down or do some extra cones and have some extra lanes, but it would be a lot of fun if we could get the brew bike to go in between somewhere in Rancho. I know between J.J. Pfister and Claim Stake is like seven miles. I don't think anybody's making that trek, but you could probably go between American River Brewing and Burning Barrel, somewhere in there, maybe over to Gold River Distilling. But no, it was a fantastic event. Kudos to everybody that was involved in pulling it off. We had our Folskordova two by two, trying to think, we talked a lot about messaging and communications plans. I don't know if David had some more takeaways from that, it's been a little while. And then I just want to thank Stacy Delaney and the folks at Folskordova Community Partnership. We are getting very close to launching one of my, I guess, pet projects, which was the college savings accounts for students and we're starting with Abraham Lincoln Elementary. And the school and Folskordova Community Partnership came up with the new name for that program is going to be called Lincoln Goes to College. And so they're going to have a whole bunch of opportunities to visit colleges and their parents will get financial literacy trainings and so will the, the teachers and the students. And where they're, we're going to be partnering with Tri-County's Bank, who's also bringing in a very new height, or new tech company in the space of financial literacy called EverFi to provide additional financial literacy tools and trainings to, to the fourth grade, no, fifth graders at Lincoln Elementary. So that's all for me and that'll be launching, I believe, next month.
Super, thank you.
Mr. Terry Mudd, I only suggest that we approve the brew bike on Sunrise right after we increase the city attorney's office's budget.
Oh, kill joy.
Approved. Second.
Kill joy.
Who brought the lawyer?
Garrett.
All right. So I'm out stumping and meeting people and so I thought I'd bring up how wonderful Rancho Cordova citizens really are. And so a, a fun story since everyone, I was, I was out over off South Rock, South Rock Road and I was door knocking along there and I meet an individual that's fully disabled, but has lived in Rancho Cordova for probably 30 years, ex-fet. And what he does on his spare time is he basically takes old furniture and rehabs it and gives it away for free in the Rancho Cordova area. And every time I run into a citizen, we just have some of the best citizens, most caring, always wanted to get involved and just really care about the city. And so, you know, I, I ran into one that's been there for 30 years and, and knew you, Linda, and said that he loves what we've done with the city. So I thought I'd start with that. All right, here's everything. Diane, that event was amazing. I know you haven't slept and I know you haven't eaten in at least three to four months, but that Beryl District Event was super fun. I had to be a DD because that's what I do, but I ate the food, which was delicious and they had ribs and they had meatballs and they had mac and cheese and that was just a great event. And it was great because people from outside the city came in and got to go to our Beryl District and really get a taste of Rancho and it's just another spotlighting something amazing that's going on in our city. And, and really, we couldn't do without the chamber and the staff, thank you for supporting them and coming through. It was, it was an amazing event. I also went to Chili's because they were doing a fundraiser for the deputy. And so always thank you for taking the time as a business owner to support our police. We really appreciate it. I went to Famous Burger and if you guys don't know there, he also did something for the deputy fund and thank you so much for the business to be able to take the time to donate to our city. It shows that they really want to be involved and that we, we care about our police. I went to the 50 Highway Corridor Luncheon at the casino. That was amazing because it's good to see all these other businesses coming in and, and that's where a bunch of all the cities up and down the 50 corridor all come together for networking. I went to the Rancho Cordova Chamber breakfasts. It's always good to see all the new businesses that are coming and willing to get up that early. They, they open up, the Casa Ramos actually opens up early just to be able to house us and, and throws together breakfast just for those group. I went to the Cable Commission and popped in just in time to see them. They are a mess and seem to be suing each other every time I'm there. They just, every time we go in and get, like, I don't know who their lawyer is, but he's killing it. There is a, I mean, like, they're, they're literally in lawsuits every meeting and they're like, well, to update the first lawsuit we did, we're, we're re-suing this person and this person. So I was just, phew.
Well, no wonder our cable bills keep going up. We're paying for all those attorneys, holy Toledo.
Goodness. Mather. Yeah, yeah. Mather Heritage Trail.
Well, somebody's paying the attorneys and I think it's us.
Yeah, that's true. Mather Heritage Trail, that's great because now, I was talking with people and they're thinking now they can stop at Light Rail and take bikes to the airshow instead of having to fight the traffic, which I thought was kind of ingenious. And so that's exciting. I liked going into seeing the business. It's interesting that you find all these big, big warehouse businesses kind of tucked into Rancho, so the tour to see how they're building every stuff and, and of course, I'm a techie, so they had all these automated robots going and building all these tools and so that's just all day long, want to sit there with their digitized equipment. River Street Chistin had their golf tournament, STA decided to cancel last minute, that was great to be down there. We have our first laser tag in Rancho Cordova, so I got to open, help to cut the ribbon on that. That was amazing because it's fun to have new things to do in Rancho Cordova and in that Fight Circle area, so of course my son was there excited and they have this cool like laser, like escape room. And so all of a sudden, these lasers come out of the walls and you've got to whittle your way through and then touch a door to disarm the room and there's like keys on the end and you got to touch the key and then touch the door and it disarms itself.
Like stealing jewels in the movie.
Yes, exactly like that. So of course, you know, the two little gateway boys are having the best time because they're smaller than anything else, so they can just lay down and kind of just roll to the end and my son found that out in the end and I'm like, get off the floor, stop rolling, you're supposed to be jumping. Go for pizza. Really excited that you guys are here, your, your anniversary, it's awesome. Rancho Cordova is such a good place to open a business. We actually, we've sold them out of dough for the first week and I've never heard a restaurant being like, we're just out of dough. They have another restaurant and they tried to go and get more dough and then we just showed up and bought them out again. So they are a great partner and it's delicious, especially if you order crispy, very crispy. If Anil's still here, oh, the Tegon event was amazing. It's, it's crazy to see that many people coming into our city and it's a great cultural event and you learn a lot and he's always willing to explain it to you. He dressed up my wife and I told her she didn't look like my wife and I was like, she said it was a compliment, I was like, yeah, you're just gorgeous. He said, I didn't see you because she had it in the gear and that was awesome. So thank you so much for that. And my boys had a blast because they had the garbs and then the problem is with little children, they'll start fighting with the garbs and I'm trying, hopefully that's not disrespectful, but my kids thought they were ninja outfits and so all of a sudden they're wrapping themselves up and jumping and anyways, thank you for that. You, you guys are always a welcome place to like season our community. And last was the Sports Hall of Fame. It's great to see all these Rancho Cordova ends that are in the Sports Hall of Fame and every once in a while you see a famous sports star, so that's super cool. And so I was, I went to that. I haven't done anything, just 50 items. And so it was great seeing that. It, it's funny because you go there and it's kind of like, it's kind of like a club and so they all, like I said, I sat out with the mayor and he was basically out there pointing out every person and he basically knows everyone by, by heart, so he shakes their hands, like, oh, da, 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 da. So it was crazy thinking about how, what amazing sports lineage we actually have in this city and we're getting back. And so that was it.
Super, thank you Garrett. David?
Thank you Garrett for that review of the Sports Hall of Fame. The thing that always amazes me there is you have some casual reference in the middle of the, of the description of the winner and this, one of, one of them said, in 1978, you know, so-and-so played on the state championship football team and after that, they were a dual sport kid, so they played on the runner-up state championship basketball team. And then not to be outdone, they played soccer and won another state championship at Cordova. And you just think about, there are, there are no places like that anymore. It was such a unique environment at Cordova for, for a length of time that celebrating it through the Sports Hall of Fame is really, it's sort of an amazing thing every year to see that happen. So that, that was great, the Sports Hall of Fame. And I do need to apologize to my, my friends in Folsom. Our Rancho Cordova soccer teams that my son plays on keep beating all the Folsom teams.
Oh, that's too bad.
They're running out of opponents to put up against us, so it's, it's a shame, but we should be proud of it in Rancho Cordova. We have some amazing athletes here, some of whom are undoubtedly bound for that Sports Hall of Fame. But that was just to settle a little, a little wager with our friends sort of up the hill. Let's see, Cyrus, Albert and I went on a trip to DC that lasted, what, about a day and a half, involved two flights, four meetings.
Lots of rain.
One overnight, some rain, yeah. And a very brief foray in, in looking at a few monuments. But we did a lot in that time period. We met with the staff for Senator Harris, Senator Feinstein, Representative Bera, and we had a meeting at the Department of Transportation, talking about some very critical infrastructure projects and some very high dollar projects that are part of a build program that Department of Transportation has out and we think our projects are doing, our project is doing exceptionally well. This is White Rock Road, in case you hadn't figured it out. But we will find out in, well, by December, perhaps as early as late November, whether or not that application is successful. This strategy of going there and expressing interest sort of above and beyond what's normally done has been successful for other communities. Our lobbyists there are very supportive of that activity, happy to set us up in that and we even have a game plan going forward because sometimes these applications, for, for example, this one has been out maybe twice before for other programs and applications. You have to take a long view of how to get that much dollar, that, that many dollars out of a federal government program. So we are, we are pursuing it and pursuing it well and I think we're pretty good at, at that DC part of it. So wish us luck and we may have a great, a great November and December announcement. Cordova High had a homecoming and I think our mayor had something to do with that, she'll probably say something about that, but that was a, a great football game, a great event. Beryl District Tour seemed truly amazing. The Mather Heritage Trail was, if you haven't seen that trail, it is shockingly nice. It is probably the nicest bike trail in terms of facilities, width, appearance that you're going to find in our region. The, just, just the bike repair stations alone, I don't think anybody has anything of that caliber. I was just looking at a few this weekend on the American River Parkway and they're, they're, you know, generations before ours, ours is, ours are really nice. The benches, the artwork, the landscaping, we did an excellent job with that trail and we're going to add a lot of value to the neighborhood that trail goes next to. I know people are often concerned about, you know, adding something or changing something, but if you have those concerns in your neighborhood, come take a look at this trail and look at the amount of use it's getting that is now all positive as opposed to an abandoned rail corridor that had primarily just negative use before. It's, it was a really awesome thing. So congratulations to staff for your perseverance. As I understand it, I was kind of shocked at the ribbon cutting, that was a 14-year project in the making because of the number of moving pieces, funders, the railroad, federal government, state government, county. There were a lot of representatives there at the ribbon cutting that demonstrates how complex that, that particular project was. You may not have heard about this, but Cordova High Drama Program is having a staging of The Curious Savage, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 7:00 PM. You don't want to miss it, I know the play, it's a really fun play. It's great for a high school to put it on. 7:00 PM, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, find some time to do that. We did a two by two with the Folsom Cordova School District, talked a lot about messaging for our schools. We think our schools probably don't toot their own horn quite as often as they should and so we've found great ways to sort of encourage them in that and assist with that with city resources and a partnership with the school district. Everyone's sort of unified and that, that being an outstanding goal for our community, so I look forward to some great products there. And finally, we had a SECOC State of Good Repair Lunch last week. We've been doing a series of these lunches, they're mainly attended by SECOC board members, but also you see some city and county staff show up on different topics. This one was just looking at the state of the region's road repair in terms of a pavement condition index or PCI. And although we're spending a lot to rehab and maintain what we have, the reality is that index year over year is falling. So in other words, you'd like to have roads at an 80th percentile of maintenance, ours overall in the region are probably in the 50s, maybe 55. A couple of years ago, they were probably closer to 60 and a couple of years from now, they'll probably be closer to 50. So what that means is that our entire region, the average quality of pavement is declining over time and the amount of revenue necessary to. over time, and the amount of revenue necessary to remedy that is beyond gas tax, it's beyond SB 1, it's beyond Measure A, it's beyond anything the feds could ever provide, or the state. So we really need to think creatively and aggressively about how to maintain what we've already built. And there are regions that are frankly, uh, upside down. Dallas did an analysis recently that said, we have no way to fund the maintenance of what we've built in transportation terms. And we, as a city, um, you know, have done this analysis, we're not at that, at that brink. We could certainly have a higher PCI, and we could think about, you know, strategies to do that, but as a region, the region is worse off than, than we are. So we need to think, you know, regionally and very carefully about our own work here, that we don't do that to ourselves, and put out so much infrastructure, we're not physi- physi- physically capable of maintaining it. That's my report.
Albert's going to call the pizza people to come and fix the potholes.
Um, well, one thing I wanted to pick up from what, uh, and David just said about our, um, roads here at Rancho Cordova, is that when you come to anything, whether it's a, a simple pothole, or sometimes you have some roads that have been really in bad shape for years, is that we're taking the time to repair them before we just cover them, because if you have a, uh, pothole and you just fill it up with asphalt, the next time it rains, it floats off, and it, you have, comes again, you have the same problem. So we're taking the time, uh, and the money to put in the repairs, and then to put in the, like, the rubberized asphalt and things that will maintain for a while. You don't have to worry about, um, coming, going back to the same thing next year. Um, so we, you're right, we have to keep up with what we've done. We'll see what happens with the, um, election on, um, Proposition 6 and all the rest of the things that are, um, up in the air, so we'll see how that goes. Uh, going back to the, um, Mather Heritage Trail and the ribbon cutting on that was fantastic. Um, as David said, when you've got, um, bike repair things alongside, you have so many good things on that. I know when it was being used by the railroads, uh, they would have the, um, uh, they would come in with the training for the, um, navigators at Mather when it was being used there, then it wasn't used anymore for a while after Mather closed, and then after stopping the, um, county from putting in a big water tank, um, on the corner of, uh, Mather and Folsom, then, uh, they have water going underneath the, uh, tank where the, um, Mather Heritage Trail is. So it's being used, and now you have people on bicycles and walking and everything like that, so it's, I'm really glad that it's something that is, uh, in, really in use, because it is something that, uh, would be, we're thinking about putting, trying to get another, uh, crossing on the, um, uh, east side of Zinfandel, so people can get across, cuz you see very few people walking, uh, riding bikes, getting across the freeway on Zinfandel, cuz the traffic is so busy. So if we could have another way to go across, it would be very helpful, I think. We talked about that in the past, uh, on the council, but, uh, we ought to start looking at it again. Um, I wanna say, um, thank you to the community and all of the, uh, support they have been giving, continue to give to the, uh, our police with, uh, Officer Mark Stasiak, uh, being killed, but people just kinda came together on that, and it was, it was wonderful to see that. People do appreciate what the police do, and they appreciate what that gentleman did. He, uh, gave his life for helping us, and so, um, it's, uh, wonderful to see what the community can and, and does do. So there's, um, one more thing about the, uh, I was really glad to see the principals here. Uh, I knew at least half of them. I know White Rock, for instance. One year, all four of my kids, when they were growing up, were going to White Rock. We lived in that area. We had, uh, sixth grade and third and fourth and kindergarten, all in White Rock at the same time. And since then, we've been going to Riverview and Cordova Gardens and Cordova Lane, the grandkids, and just all over the place. But it was so nice to see the principals here and to kinda introduce themselves to the people, because I think when you have people watching this station, um, uh, 14 and then go online, you can see some people that maybe the people here didn't see before and meet some of the new principals that are new to them, too. So I think that was really great for them to be here. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Um, yes, everyone is correct. This, um, this community continues to turn out so beautifully to support, uh, the Stasiak family. Um, and like Garrett, I did attend the, uh, a candlelight vigil over at Village Green that was put together by local neighbors, as well as the fundraiser at Chili's. Um, Mather Trail is just as spectacular as everyone says, and it is very heavily used, but part of the fun thing about it was the fact that, um, the way staff, uh, designed the, the day's events, from the ribbon cutting in the morning to the, um, to the picnic in the afternoon. It was probably the first time that anybody's ever invited that neighborhood to come out and just sort of have an evening or late afternoon kinda party in the park, and it wasn't actually in the park, but it was on the, on the Heritage Trail, and it was a totally unique event, and people just came and ate hot dogs and brought their kids, and everyone had a super time, and, and we really appreciate the way the staff designed that particular event. A couple of more, uh, Fridays probably ago, I attended a groundbreaking out at Mather for the, um, Taiwanese, uh, pilot training school that has come to join us. Uh, they came about a year ago. It's called EVA, and, um, they have just broken ground on their first hangar. They have a beautiful office building with classrooms and training, uh, training rooms and, um, evaluation rooms for the student pilots, and now they're adding hangar to it. Homecoming at Cordova High was an absolute hoot. I have three grandkids at Cordova at this point, um, a sophomore, and, uh, I mean, a senior, a sophomore, and a freshman, and, um, I got to judge the homecoming floats, which is always tricky, and you truly have to do it by the numbers so that you don't show favoritism for anybody. Um, I was asked to come and speak to the Kiwanis, Rancho Cordova Kiwanis, last week, and, and even though they, they seem to be an organization of about 18 to 24 people, it is amazing how much they are able to accomplish, and here again, it's all because they are such dedicated volunteers. Thank you to Anil. Um, I am also the proud recipient of a perfectly beautiful sari. I've, uh, got to dance with all the ladies, celebrate the flowers, um, we sang a song, we had a really wonderful time, uh, and I stayed as long as I could, and then went over to the Rancho Cordova Athletic Awards here at City Hall. Um, David is 100% correct about the, the athletic heritage that we enjoy here in Rancho Cordova, but one of the most meaningful things for that, uh, for us about that particular celebration, I had our two youngest grandkids, who will both be going to Cordova High, and, uh, two girls, and Ken Rudolph, who is a Cordova grad, you know him from Channel 13, he's a Cordova grad from the 80s, and Ken made the most incredible motivational speech about the culture of Cordova High and what he has taken away from his experience in high school and the friends that he has made that have stayed with him a long time. And for the girls to hear that kind of, um, encouragement for people going into Cordova High was really pivotal, pivotal, David. So I, uh, I appreciate the fact that we ask Ken to come back year after year, and if he could just make that same speech every year, that would be a really good idea. Uh, this morning, I went to, um, I went downtown to the Fourth Annual Sacramento Regional Affordable Housing Summit, uh, at the Sheridan. They went on all day long. The, the main focus was to talk about how, um, affordable housing and housing for the homeless is funded, and of course, um, I, uh, the, the lady who organized it, um, is now the Executive Director of Sacramento Steps, uh, Sacramento Steps Forward, she's, no, is that right? Yeah. Um, Kathy Cresswell, who used to head up the state HCD department, and, um, of course, I, I, everybody's kidding her about the fact that they're gonna take hours, eight hours, and then come up with a, with an instant solution for funding of affordable housing, and I, we rather doubt that they did, but, um, it was, the section that I participated in was, um, Daryl Steinberg and Christopher Walden and Lucas Fredericks from Davis, talking about different projects and how we had all, how we had put together the funding. Um, and everybody agreed with us that it should not take eight years to have to be able to fund housing for our homeless veterans. That just is completely inexcusable in the world, and, um, so that's what they were gonna try to solve today. Then this afternoon, uh, our Deputy City Clerk, Kelly Carr, and I went to George Washington Carver High School to spend an hour signing up kids to, uh, either register to vote or to pre-register to vote, and this was a very lively group of people. They made a video, uh, their video class made a video, and we had a really good conversation about why people should vote and why they probably don't vote, and how close some elections are, which I know that at least somebody here can identify with, about how close elections are, because that was one of the things kids said, my vote doesn't count, all right? And I said, oh, yes, it does, you can be one of three who make an election count. Um, it's always great, you, it's nice of you to be an example, it's always great to have an example to point to, to be able to show people that this works in real time. And then I had a really funny deja vu, um, yesterday at, at Chili's again. Um, some of us will remember that there've been several times when the council members as, um, um, uh, have been asked to use some of our discretionary funds to help send, uh, teenagers to participate in programs like Up With People, or some of the programs that take the kids to Washington DC so that they can understand government up close and personal. And yesterday, this, this young man waiting on us asked me what my na- asked me if I, if my name was Budge, and I said, yes, and he said, you gave me money to go to Washington, DC. And I remember this kid, um, not that I could possibly have recognized him, but, um, there was a year when we sent two people, Connor Nishio and Bryce Everett, and this was Bryce Everett. And it was, we actually, uh, after they had come back from their trip, we made the come and report to us on what their experiences were and how, um, and the value that they got out of that trip, and I was really pleased that Bryce remembered, so. Um, I am now going to turn it over to our city manager for some nice news.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, most, everything have already been mentioned, so I will not, uh, repeat those, uh, but just wanted to repeat, uh, the outpouring of support that we have received from the community and the businesses, um, um, in support of our fallen officer, and, and certainly brings a level of relief after this terrible tragedy to our police families. I want to thank everybody for, for their support. I also would like to take this opportunity to, uh, acknowledge one of our staff members who has, uh, had a certain accomplishment. Our Assistant City Clerk, Marie Weber, was recently designated as, uh, a certified municipal clerk, and I want to, uh, acknowledge and congratulate, uh, Marie on this great accomplishment. This program is designed to enhance the job performance of the clerk in small and large municipalities, and not only requires some extensive educational programs, but also requires a level of, um, relevant experience in, in the work. Uh, Marie came to us, uh, recently, she's been with the city team for, uh, since January of 2018, and we're very lucky to have her, she's been a great addition to our team. Congratulations, and, and thank you for doing a great job for us.
Wonderful. Thank you, Maria. Maria.
Madam Mayor, if I may take just a moment to-
Of course.
Provide the piece of city manager news that you asked me to share with the council. Um, just for the benefit of the public, a, a brief report out from last week, the city council can, had a special meeting on, uh, Tuesday evening, and, at which it conducted the city manager's annual performance evaluation, and the council reported, and is placed in the minutes for that meeting, that the council both conducted and concluded the evaluation in that session, and, uh, asked to be reported out that, uh, the council determined that the city has a high-functioning team led by a high-functioning city manager.
And we've just had an example of that high-functioning team, so, thank you both.
I thank you for all the support the council has given me. I appreciate it.
Do you wanna talk about Gary? Gary?
Uh, I was, um, I'll do that at the next meeting. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Cyrus. Okay, we're going to move into our consent calendar items. Uh, we have consent calendar items 9.1 through 9.6, and, uh, consent calendar items are usually deemed routine and can be approved with one vote unless somebody needs to pull an item. So, um, I am going to pull 9.4, and, um, city attorney want to announce the reason?
Uh, yes, my understanding, uh, is because there is a, uh, potential conflict of interest relating to a real property interest by council member. Madam Mayor, is that correct?
Um, I believe that-
I believe we're talking, I believe the one that we're gonna need to pull is going to-
Yeah, I thought that was-
Yeah, it's gonna be, um-
9.4.
No, 10.1.
Or-
Okay, but I was told it needed to be 9.4 also because, um, it's-
Oh, it does say it's anthology.
It's, it's-
Yep, it's that, too.
Right. It's the same project.
Yep, so, um, and, and I'll go ahead and do it. Um, so I'd like to pull 9.4, um, and I'm going to be recusing myself due to, um, the proximity of my home to these properties.
Thank you.
And I'm not the only one.
That you're recusing.
I'm also recusing myself due to location to these developments.
Okay, so, um, if you guys wanna walk outside for a minute?
Why, why don't we do this? Why, I'll make a motion to approve the, the balance of the calendar.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so, um, 9.1 through 9.3 and 9.5 and 6. Uh, we have a motion in a second. Stacy, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gateway.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much.
Um, and I would just say that I-
Actually, that's a really good idea, and then we can go into consent public hearing.
Right, and, so I was just gonna say, under the consent public hearing, I would be fine with not being in the room for the other item on that, too, so.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that, that was really logical. Thank you.
Okay, so if there are no further questions, uh, we need a, a, uh, motion on 9.4.
So moved.
Thank you, Stacy.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Count, uh, Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, we will then go into our consent public hearing items, and, um, uh, Stacy, if you wanna read 10.1 into the record?
First Amendment to the Development Agreement Relative to Anthology at Anatolia.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing and ask if anybody came to speak to this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Stacy.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, that carries. We'll invite our colleagues back into the room. Gentlemen?
I'm sorry.
Okay, Stacy, um, if you wanna read item 10.2?
A resolution declaring a protest hearing and authorizing the mailing of property owner ballot relating to the imposition of an annual stormwater utility fee for the European Parts Depot.
Great, we'll open the public hearing and ask if anybody came to speak to this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask if there are no further questions, if somebody would like to make a motion on 10.2.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Call the roll.
Was the motion- Was the motion by?
Terry.
Thank you.
I was the second.
Got it, thank you.
The two people with their mouths full.
Thank you.
I finished chewing.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, we will move into our public hearing items, and the first item is 11.1.
11.1, actions related to approval of the South Sacramento Habitat, Habitat, Habitat Conservation Plan.
This is it, right? This is-
This is the HCP, right.
We're done?
So, I think what I'll do then is go ahead and open the public hearing. Okay. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor Budge and council members. Elizabeth Bachmann, Community Development Director, and I have with me-
Darcy Geller, Planning Manager.
We're going to tag-team this. So before we start, I just wanted to take a few moments to thank the county staff, because this has been a project that's been in the making for a couple of decades. It's been a heavy lift by the county and their staff. And then in 2012, Bill Zebraun came on board and really got this project going again. And also, I want to thank Cyrus and Paul, who've been involved in this for many years, and we're fortunate, right, as a plan partner, to be able to implement on this. And at this point, I wanted to ask Bill Zebraun if he wanted to come up and say a few words.
Welcome, Bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
We don't want to see you again.
You can come back for a different project? I won't take that personally. Believe me. No, it's a, it's a pleasure. It's really a pleasure to be here at this stage of this process. And I will say that I'm extremely proud of the work that the team has done to build consensus on this program across the board with many, virtually all of the key stakeholder groups, and also very proud of the work that the team has done to build consensus and get a unified front from the resource agencies that this is the way to go. This program will be transformational for how we do environmental permitting in this region, in this city, for many, many, many years to come. And I would also like to acknowledge and let you all know that I really appreciate the support that you've been able to provide while I've been involved, along with the other planned partners, the work of Cyrus, Elizabeth, Darcy, the rest of the staff across the board. I'd like to also acknowledge Jean Endicott, Michelle Smira, they are here tonight with our team on, on the outreach component. And then finally, LeAnn Moffett, of course, the planning director from Sacramento County, who's been a great support all the way through. So with that, I will just turn it back to Elizabeth and let her give you the presentation, and we're available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Super. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we have some actions tonight, and I know we're very excited about this. We're conducting a public hearing. We're going to adopt a resolution that does several things. It accepts the certified EIR, EIS, it adopts SEQA findings, it'll adopt the plan itself, the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. It adopts the Aquatic Resources Plan, and it also adopts the Nexus Study. So that's kind of a super resolution. We also are going to be introducing and waiving the first reading of the Aquatic Protection Ordinance. Then we're going to adopt and implementing resolution that talks about the roles and responsibilities and procedures for implementation of the SSHCP, and it also, it also authorizes the city manager to execute the implementing agreement. And then finally, we're going to introduce and waive the first reading of the mitigation fee ordinance. So these are some of the benefits, right? Bill has explained this in the past, right? It simplifies and expedites the permitting. It's first-time integration of Endangered Species Act, Section 404 and 401, right? We have that, we're implementing at the local level, creates a huge interconnected preserve system, and it provides greater certainty to the project applicants. Just a reminder, the plan area, it's a graphic here, I won't read all of it. It is a big plan area, and it is combined, you know, part of it's inside the, the urban boundary and outside the urban development area. So the actions we're taking tonight are the local adoption actions in green. Concurrently, and Bill will take this process through to the end, are the implementing with the resource agencies and securing the permits.
In terms of environmental, there was an environmental impact statement and environmental impact report prepared for the plan. And of that, one of the alternatives that was selected, which was what was, is the superior alternative, is the 50-year federal and state permitting process. As part of that environmental, there were no significant unavoidable impacts identified. There were no mitigation measures required as part of the EIR and the EIS. And in general, it provides these long-term benefits to biological resources and aquatic resources. So the aquatic resource program is a landscape-level protection priority for our aquatic system. It integrates with a streamlining process with various state agencies and the permitting process. And it adds to the plan a framework of protection for these natural communities and native plant and wildlife species, including protection of the aquatic resources that are throughout our county. And before you tonight is the Aquatic Resource Program Ordinance. So the purpose of that ordinance is to establish a locally implemented permit process that's administered here by staff for the aquatic resource program. It will include various procedures for reviews of applications that will come before us that are covered underneath the plan. And the intent of it is to achieve a no net loss of aquatic resource function and services.
So again, we will be asking you to adopt a resolution that'll authorize the city manager to execute the implementing agreement. The purpose of that implementing agreement, in fact, the sole purpose, is between the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the plan permities, or to clarify the provisions of the HCP, and the processes the parties intend to follow to ensure successful implementation of the HCP in accordance with the permit. So it tells us what processes we have to follow, how we're going to do it, how we're going to ensure development meets all the requirements of the permit. So the other thing you'll be adopting tonight is the Nexus Study, and then you're going to introduce this mitigation fee ordinance. So under the Nexus Study, it's, it's combined as land dedication and mitigation in lieu fees, right, by land cover type. It conforms to the Mitigation Fee Act, and it provides certainty and cost advantages. The mitigation fee ordinance is actually the mechanism that provides for the collection and dispersment of the fees that we will be collecting. And the, in terms of the mitigation fee amounts, they will be established separately, right? We're not doing that tonight. They, the fees themselves, the amounts, need to get approved by the South Sacramento, South Sacramento Conservation Agency. After they approve them, we'll bring back a resolution to you to adopt those fees. So here's a list of the fees, and I'll give you a chance to look it over. I think last time, a lot of people are always curious about what the Vernal Pool impact is, and it's 191,000 per acre. Again, you will not be approving those tonight. So in terms of actions taken, the county board hearing on September 11th, they certified the final EIS, EIR, not EIS, EIS. And they took all actions necessary to implement the plan. Next steps, on September 28th, the JPA Connector did adopt the plan. Tonight, we're doing the same. Tomorrow night, it goes before the City of Galt. And then October 29th, is the tentative date for the meeting of the South Sacramento Conservation Agency, and I know Garrett and you and Linda will be on that. And then following adoption of the plan by everybody, the staff can proceed with pursuing the, the permits.
So in conclusion, the plan actually has various benefits that are listed here on the screen before you. Some of those being that it does provide a simplified and expedited process for federal and state permitting implementations at a local level. And another thing is that it does provide this greater certainty for mitigation requirements, timing, and costs for project applicants, which is a huge deal for those folks that are looking to come in with their projects underneath the SSHCP. In terms of actions for tonight, staff's requesting that you, after concluding the public hearing, adopt a resolution, which is Exhibit A in your packet. And what this will do is you'll be accepting the certified EIR, EIS, adopting the SEQA findings of fact, adopting the actual plan, which also includes adoption of the Aquatic Resource Plan and the Nexus Study. Introduce and waive the first reading of the Aquatic Protection Ordinance, which is Exhibit B. And then adopt the implementation, implementation, implementing, sorry, implement, implementing resolution, which will also authorize the city manager to execute the implementing agreement. And then introduce the mitigation fee ordinance. And that concludes our presentation. We can answer any questions. And again, there's also staff from the county here as well.
Wonderful. Thank you, Darcy. Thank you, Elizabeth. We appreciate the fact that, that this has been such a complicated project, and you have always worked very hard to present a very clear staff report and to pretty much distill this down into the, into the really important parts so that everyone can understand it. So are there questions for staff? Are we thinking or not thinking?
Just kind of, when it takes 30 years, we've been a city for 15. So does that mean that we were the ones that got it going finally? Or? No, okay.
No, actually, it's been, and it's, it's actually 1991. 1991, I think that's, I think that's longer than 30 years. Well, no, it's not quite, but 1991. Okay. Did anybody in the audience come to speak to this item? Bob? Yeah, come on up.
You hear that, Bob?
Yeah. I'm sorry, this has been a long day.
Yeah, that's all right. So Mayor, members of the council, I'm Bob Shattuck with Shattuck Community Planning with several projects, past, present, and future in the city of Rancho Cordova. I'm just here to support the proposed action, thank everybody involved for getting it to this point. This really, this process reminds me of the velodrome bicycle races that you see in the Olympics. For years, they just go around in circles, just making enough forward progress that the bike doesn't tip over, but it ends with this furious sprint of incredible proportions. And so that's kind of what the process was like here. Incredible amount of effort in the last couple of years to get this to you today. Just want to thank everybody who was involved with that. Incredible amount, incredible amount of stakeholder support. People who don't agree on anything agreed on this a long time ago. And what's most amazing to me is we've held that stakeholder support for decades, which is just incredible. Generations of people in those same organizations have stayed on board. The benefits have been listed. Really, it comes down to better outcomes, better process, and for me, most importantly, more local control. This gets the federal government, for the most part, out of your local land use planning, out of your local infrastructure planning. You will plan and control your own projects and your own infrastructure and the timing of that infrastructure, much more so under this approach. I think that's a, a huge benefit for you. A good example of that is I was called in to help the city of Rancho Cordova on a traffic safety project that had been stuck for about two years. And the, to their credit, the agencies did backflips, helped us get through that process, and we got through it. But under this new plan, that would have been two weeks, and you wouldn't have had to use me. So it's just-
So you just talked yourself out of a job?
I know I have, but it's okay. This is one of those times that's a good thing. So I encourage your support. I would say, timing matters on all of this, so I'm glad it's before you now. This really needs to get wrapped up in the next month or two for us to be able to count on it for the construction season in 2019, because we're lining up crews, we're getting things under contract for financing projects. You need to know you can do this. You need to know you're going to be able to get permits under it. So I really encourage your timely consideration. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Bob. And yes, we, we really do want to compliment everybody who's involved, that they were able to organize all the federal agencies, federal regulatory agencies going in the same direction at the same time, because there are countless people in this region who've put time in it, into that, both here locally, as well as in DC and with the congressional. At one point, we actually had, I think there are 14 congressional members who represent Northern California, who all came together in a meeting to, to try to get the, just the Corps of Engineers alone to do something. And, and here we are, 15 years later, so.
And, and I've been involved from the beginning, and I could have done without you reminding me that was 1991.
Well, I knew I wasn't the only one in the room who remembered that, so. Super. Bill, do you all have anything finally you want to say?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, if I just say a few words. I think Mr. Zebraun is being too modest for not saying anything. He, he has done an incredible job of this last round of sprint to get this to the finish line. So I really want to take this opportunity and thank Bill and the team, LeAnn and others who are, many of them in the room tonight. This was a monumental task. This is something that, along the way, I have been involved in it on and off for years, and there were times that we really doubted whether we would even get to this point, whether we would even get to the finish line. So thank you for a job I've done, and I really appreciate getting this to the finish line.
Most welcome. You're most welcome. I would just say, simply and reiterate to what Bob said, and the timing is important. We have a couple steps to finish it off with the agencies, especially the Corps, to get their permits lined up and ready to go. The service is, I think, a little closer, but end of this calendar year is really the time. And I, we'll get there, but these actions over here, the rest of this month, are really important for us to get there. So again, thank you all. It's been a pleasure and an honor to, to work on this and to, and to get it to this stage.
Wonderful. Thank you, Bill. Okay, so we have a five-part recommendation. If there are no further questions, would somebody like to move the staff recommendation?
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please. Actually, let me close the public hearing. Okay.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you to everyone for coming. Jean, Michelle, Bob, everybody, thank you all very much. Darcy, Elizabeth, thank you.
She gets it. She, Bob. Bob, she gets it.
How many times have you had to testify? I guess you never had to fill out a card, you were always just on the agenda.
That's exactly right.
There you go.
Item 11.2.
So this item is the Woodside Homes Douglas 98 Subdivision Major Design Review and Special Development Permit, including sequoia, magnolia, cottonwood, and eucalyptus.
Good evening, Mayor Budge and council. I am June Cows with the Planning Department. So tonight, Woodside Homes with Douglas 98 subdivision projects. So these four projects, we've smashed into one presentation. I will be presenting the history and the special development permit request, and Nick Sosa will be presenting the major design review. So the project request is for a special development permit, and that's to vary from the Sun Ridge specific plan required setbacks from property lines, and the required setbacks between buildings. And also, requesting major design review for four neighborhoods, and that includes totaling 14 floor plans. So the site is located in the southwest corner of Douglas Road and Grantline Road. And to give you the history of Douglas 98, it is within the Sun Ridge specific plan and included revisions. So the 2004 Sun Ridge Eastwood Properties Specific Plan Amendment included Douglas 98, Douglas 103, Grantline, 208, and Arista del Sol. So these were modified from the original plan due to the increase of the wetland preserve. And the amendment included the following: higher density zoning, that's RD 10, Central Park, Paseo design, and connectivity to the parks and neighborhood, and just a greater diversity- and just a greater diversity of lot configuration for different housing products. Now, in 2013, Douglas 98 rezoned and tentative subdivision map were approved, and that included eliminated the zipper lots and reduced the small park acreage and replaced it with RD 5 and RD Zone. So this is the Douglas 98 approved subdivision map. And you can see it still has the Central Park area, alley-loaded and front-loading lots, and it also includes the Paseos and a grid connectivity. So to go over the special development permit, because Douglas 98 is within the Sun Ridge specific plan, it was approved by Sacramento County prior to the city incorporation. And as such, provisions of the county zoning code are applicable. So the purpose for the special development permit may be issued is to encourage a creative and a more efficient approach to the use of the land. It's also for it to provide a greater creativity and flexibility in design. So getting to the requested special development permit. Listed in the far-left corner is the Sun Ridge specific plan setbacks. So the other corners identify the four different neighborhoods under alley and front-loading lots and different lot sizes. So the proposed front-loading lots, that's 50 by 80, and the 50 feet by 90 feet. The front setback for the garage, there has been no requested revisions. That still stands at 19 feet. The living space goes from 16 feet to 10 feet, and that's for the living space forward and the garage recessed. Side yard is, one side is maintained at five feet, and this project has been conditioned to be on the garage side, minimum five feet on the garage side. And that's to allow for the trash containers to get in and out of the gate. And for the rear yard, 10 feet for single-story and 15 feet for the two-story. This has been consistent with the Sun Ridge specific plan condition that in no event the rear yard be less than 10 feet for one story and 15 feet for two-story. So the alley loading setbacks, of course, are going to be different than the front-loading lot, and they also provide a desired street front elevation. So the specific plan anticipated that future lot configurations and housing products would require setback revisions and included a statement that small lot residential units may use a variety of dwelling configurations. In such configurations, the general standard will apply, but can be varied to accommodate the characteristics of a specific dwelling unit type. So for the side yard setback for the alley-loaded, one is at a three-foot minimum, but the applicant has provided space within the rear, a rear fenced yard, and that would be the area for the trash containers. So service would be at the alley and not have the trash containers on the side. And with that, Nick Sosa.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Nick Sosa, City Planning Department Assistant Planner. The applicant is also requesting a major design review for four neighborhoods within the Douglas 98 subdivision. The neighborhoods are Sequoia, Magnolia, Cottonwood, and Eucalyptus. In total, the four neighborhoods will provide 14 floor plans and a variety of elevations. So here is a map of the Sequoia at Cypress locations. All the colored dots represent the lots for Sequoia. The Sequoia neighborhood will have alley-loaded homes with typical lot sizes of 50 feet by 90 feet in depth. And this neighborhood has three floor plans with three elevations. Rather than provide 14 floor plans with three elevations each, we chose one elevation from each floor plan to represent the Sequoia at Cypress. So to your top left is the Wine Country elevation. To your top right is the Modern Farmhouse, and the bottom center is your mid-century modern elevation. This is the Magnolia at Cypress neighborhood. These homes will be front-loaded homes with typical lot size of 50 feet by 90 feet in depth. And this neighborhood will consist of five floor plans, each with three elevations. Here are example elevations of the five floor plans: Mid-Century Modern, Modern Farmhouse, Modern Spanish, Wine Country, and Modern Prairie. This is the Cottonwood at Cypress neighborhood. The Cottonwood will consist of alley-loaded homes with typical lot sizes of 45 feet by 70 in depth, and it contains three floor plans, each with three elevations. The Cottonwood has the Modern Prairie, Modern Spanish, and Mid-Century Modern elevation. The Eucalyptus neighborhood consists of home plans that are front-loaded homes with typical lot sizes of 50 feet by 80 feet in depth. And this neighborhood does have three floor plans, again, with three elevations. Here's examples of those elevations of Modern Spanish, Modern Prairie, and Wine Country. The proposed project has been analyzed as part of the specific plan, environmental impact report, and the MND for the Eastside Properties. The proposed residential project is in conformity with what was reviewed and therefore exempt, under CEQA exemption 15182, residential projects pursuant to a specific plan. Staff recommends tonight that the City Council find the project exempt from further CEQA review and adopt the resolution approving the special development permit and the major design review for Douglas 98 for the four projects, subject to the findings, project plans, and conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you all. Are there questions for staff?
Do you have a graphic that illustrates how the trash cans are going to work on those alley-loaded parcels with a three-foot side?
Yes, that's on, it's on page seven of the staff report. We included that design in it. It's highlighted.
The graphic I have available to me is not really adequate to, to figure that out. The software that we use doesn't display it in adequate detail. Do you have anything here I could look at?
Yes. And my page seven in the printed staff report doesn't include that. Oh, actually, it might, except that I can't read it. Okay.
So it's got a three-foot setback?
Is there a landscape plan?
From the fence? Or is it three feet between each house?
It'll be three feet from the property line, so to the fence. Six feet between two homes.
So David, the ones that were the problem in Anatolia, that I used to live in, the villas, were 18 inches to maybe two feet.
Yeah, they were.
Two, so they were, they were about four feet apart. So this is at least another foot. I know the only, the only trash can that you could get in through that, through the gate from my house was the smallest one that we offered. And it barely went in.
The house, in this case, doesn't actually, doesn't occupy the entire width. So this is a narrowed part, like the house narrows for the garage as it approaches the alley. And these are placed in quite a wide space that's available for them.
Okay, so let's open-
As I see this.
Let's open the public hearing and invite the applicant to answer questions because I had the same kinds of questions. So introduce yourself and tell us how you envisioned the trash cans working.
Absolutely. Brian Cutting, Woodside Homes. I would actually pay dearly for a grease board to use this marker on for you. So to clarify the question, so on a 45-foot wide lot, remembering that the garage isn't back, the front of the house faces the street.
Can we put this?
There it is.
There we go. So looking at the, if you look on the north side of the graphic there, is there a pointer here?
Here. Is there? No. Can you take him with? I'll reset them.
Come on, help me out here. That works. Thank you. Okay, so on the backside, we have the alley with the two-car garage back here. And then right here, you see the three-foot setback between the property line and the, and the structure itself. We do not anticipate garbage cans going in this space at all to, to resolve that question. We have all this space, it's about 20 feet between this side of the garage and the adjoining property line. This is where your backyard would be, where you have the living space, exit to the garage, exit out of the garage to this big open space. Garbage cans go right here. So you have all the space in the world. Exit the garbage cans through the gate to the alley for pickup. So we don't have an issue with pinch, pinch points with garbage cans. Anywhere where the garbage can would be on the side here on a conventional lot, there's at least five feet.
Okay, Brian, so is this Eucalyptus?
This is Cottonwood, I believe.
This is Cottonwood.
Yes. Eucalyptus is the 50 by 80 conventionals.
Okay, so we've got one page here that's got, oh, here we go, Cottonwood. Okay, so, all right, so what we're also interested in, then, and I'm looking at page 22, that's, it's a black and white, but it's kind of the landscape plan. It says typical production planning layout. So please assure us that there is a, an actual flat sidewalk for people to use to put their garbage cans in and out?
Yes.
And is that accurate for all the plans?
Yes. So whether you're alley or if you are conventional, on the conventional lot, you would have a sidewalk going from the driveway, back of gate where the garbage cans can go. On the alley lot, you would have a pad in this kind of configuration right here.
Okay, so sticking with page 21 and 22, then Sequoia and Cottonwood are alley-loaded, whereas Eucalyptus and Magnolia have conventional garages in the front.
Correct.
And I shouldn't say conventional. There's as much alley-loaded as, yeah, okay. Okay. So, because, Donald, aside from the fact that we discovered probably in 2006 or something or rather that some of the special development permits had created those spaces where you couldn't actually walk between the, like, the chimney and the, and the, and the fence, you know, and-
The one I was in-
Yeah, but-
Yeah, didn't have, didn't have fireplaces in it, but-
Yeah, but we definitely, we definitely learned a hard lesson for that. But the other lesson we learned was at Capital Village, where people were having to drag their trash cans out over rocks or bark or something or other. And, and I personally would not be able to get a 90-pound trash can over rocks or bark, so.
His house is like that.
Rocks, bark, and a tree. And I would drag my, my trash can through every day.
Yeah, that's our entire street.
Okay, so that's, that's why we're asking the question. We just want to make sure.
We have, we have thought that through, and we, we worked through that with staff to make sure that that was resolved.
Okay.
And actually, and I just want to point out, because we've had this question before too, where the man door was in the wrong place. So you're going out into the garage to the man door. The trash cans are right there. We've had other ones where they didn't put that man door in, and you were having to go all the way around, so.
Yeah, the man door is standard.
These are as like that. Yep, got it. Okay, all right. Any other questions, David? Does that work?
Yep.
Okay, so personally, I would like to compliment you on seeing some different elevations.
Absolutely.
It's nice to see we have an evolution in exterior elevations now.
Yes.
And, and adding something besides Mediterranean. Adding the Wine Country is really cool.
Yeah.
That's good.
I would, Madam Mayor, if I may, I would like to say thank you to, to the council and to staff. If you recall, I was here before you in March of this year with the idea of we were going to break ground on this project in a very ambitious schedule, on a project that did not have development plans even really started yet. And I want to report back that we are fulfilling our commitments. We, we closed Douglas Road in, on June 5th, and we will be seeing asphalt going down by the end of this week. So the crews, staff has worked, worked miracles, making the plan check process work quickly, working with other agencies, of course, in partnership with SMUD, with the county, with the city, with PG&E. And we're finally seeing a true design-build project come to pass in record time. So thank you to staff. Without your efforts, this wouldn't have been possible, and I appreciate your consideration on the architecture tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would just comment too that I love seeing a mid-century modern version. I think that's a fantastic addition, yeah, and to drop some of the Mediterranean or, what were the, the Mediterranean, Spanish, and Shaker. That's, that's what I think everyone has given us, but you and Kresley so far.
Absolutely. Shaker, Shaker is appalling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll, did anybody else come to speak to this item? Then we'll close the public hearing. We have a two-part recommendation on page one. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Stacy, call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Brian.
13.3, 11.3?
I'm sorry. Yes, 11.3. There's not that many threes in that number.
So 11.3, Matherfield Chevron and Car Wash Conditional Use Permit, Minor Design Review, and Letter of Public Convenience and Necessity, project number DD 9734, located at 2931 Matherfield Road.
Nick?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Nick Sosa, Assistant Planner. Tonight's project is the Matherfield Chevron and Car Wash. The project, or the applicant is requesting four entitlements tonight. A Conditional Use Permit for the service station and added car wash, as required by the full symbol of our specific plan. A Minor Design Review for the demolition and reconstruction of the service station and added car wash. A Conditional Use Permit for off-site sales of beer and wine. And a Letter of Public Convenience and Necessity, as required by ABC. And this letter is contention upon the approval of the requested CUP. Shown here is the project's site location. It's on the corner of Matherfield and Mills Station Road. As you can kind of see here, the, the existing gas station is only occupying half of its property. The other half remains vacant. Here are some existing conditions photos of the, what the Chevron looks at, looks like as it stands now. So as mentioned earlier, the, the applicant's requesting a, requesting a CUP for the service station. Although there's currently a service station on site, we were unable to locate an existing use permit for it. So therefore, the applicant's requesting the CUP to ensure it contains proper entitlements moving forward. And of course, the project will be held to all standards and requirements for service stations. So the site design would utilize the entire site rather than half, as it does now. And the existing building will be demolished and the site expanded to incorporate that empty lot. The existing fuel canopy will remain where it stands, and the service station will be adding the car through, drive-through car wash to the property. Also, as recommended by an acoustic analysis that was performed for the project, the property will be adding an eight-foot concrete masonry wall between the adjacent apartment complex and the- between the adjacent, um, apartment complex and the newly proposed car wash. Shown here is a, a design for the, for the service station and the car wash. The car wash will be along Mills Station Road, and the, uh, drive-through will be behind the newly proposed convenience store. So, the service station will be approximately twenty-nine-hundred square feet and include a drive-through car wash. Um, the project will include new lighting, um, along the front and back of the building. The reconstructed building will have stone veneer on both the convenience store and the car wash. It also includes trellis features on the exterior walls to break up the, um, mountainous colors, color. And, um, the, again, the fuel canopy will remain where it's at. Here's a, um, color elevation of what the proposed building would look like. The top left is the front of the building. The top right is the rear along the drive-through car wash, or the drive-through. The bottom left would be the northern part of the building, and then the bottom right would be your, uh, south elevation. Here's also examples of the proposed car wash addition. The blank wall will be facing the con, uh, convenience store, and the, uh, south elevation will have the trellis features along Mills Station Road. Here are some color renderings to put it all together. So, the applicant is also requesting a CUP for off-site alcohol sales of beer and wine due to the higher-than-average crime and higher-than-average licenses in the, um, in the area. The Department of Alcohol Beverages Control is also requesting a Letter of Public Convenience and Necessity from the local jurisdiction. The, um, the letter would be contingent upon the, the approval of the CUP. And staff has also worked with ABC to obtain a list of existing licenses within the proposed census tract and also within a thousand feet of the property. And they've also worked with RCPD in reviewing the calls for service in the area within the past eighteen months. So, shown here is, um, a list of licenses within the area's census tract. When ABC is reviewing for high concentration in certain areas, they do look at census tracts. So, the, um, census tract that the gas station is in is bounded by Mather Field Road, Folsom Boulevard, uh, Zinfandel Road, and along Highway fifty. So, within that census tract, there are eight active licenses and one surrendered license. Uh, these are the active licenses within a thousand feet of the gas station. Do you, there's a straw hat with the onsite beer and wine sales, uh, seven-eleven with off-site beer and wine, Louis' Cocktail Lounge, which is a full bar, and then the applicant's pending, uh, type twenty for off-site beer and wine.
Well, Louis, can, can we go back to that?
Mm-hmm.
Louis is on the other side of the street though, right? Am I looking that correctly? This is, they're showing it kind of in the middle, but it's...
It's the bar right here.
You're...
Isn't it, it's over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, not, not where this dot is, it's over here.
Okay, so, yeah, so it would actually be outside of the census tract.
The seven-eleven is also on the other side of the street from where it's pictured.
But that side's still within the, um...
It is within the census tract.
The census tract goes all the way down that way. But you're correct, Louis is on the opposite side.
So, the, so, we can't go back. There's a convenience store, like, right there. That doesn't sell alcohol?
The...
That may not be in the census tract though, because it's on the other side of Folsom Boulevard.
If it's on the other side of Folsom Boulevard, then it would be outside of the, the, um, census tract.
If Louis is within a thousand feet, that thing's within a thousand feet, isn't it?
Yes, but it's in a different census tract. That's the way in which ABC...
Oh, no, no, take, I, I'm taking that back. I'm, I'm thinking of Rootier, never mind, there isn't one there.
Uh, yeah.
Danny's Autos is at the corner.
That's correct.
I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of the corner of Rootier.
Oh, right. No, but, but Rosie's is over there, but, again, Rosie's is on the north side of the street, so... They, um, they're, again, they're in a different census tract.
Okay.
I was curious about that too, because I know on the, uh, corner of, um, Folsom and Zinfandel, you've got four census tracts in that corner.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, you've got, you can really have a concentration in this small area, but there are different census tracts. And I was wondering if this was the same kind of a thing? Do you have one on one side of Mather and another census tract on the other side of Mather? And, because you can have a concentration like that, as we have on Zinfandel and Folsom.
So, this list does include all the licenses within the census tract. Um, this one is supposed to have, um, anything within a thousand feet, regardless of census tract, just for, um, proximity information. So, even though Louis is on the, the left side of, outside the census tract, I did include it just to show since it's within a thousand feet, just for, um, proximity.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, keep going.
Mm-hmm. So, staff also worked with, um, Ranch Cordova PD, uh, who provided information on calls for service within the area. These statistics are from January first, twenty-seventeen, to June thirtieth, twenty-eighteen. Within a quarter mile of the property, there was a total of two-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-five calls for service. Uh, not all those calls, um, were, were shown or provided reports. They may have been, um, like, hang-ups, or maybe they were, just drove by to patrol the area. Um, but the highlighted types of crimes that are reported are on the right side that, um, were higher numbers. So, there's also, within five hundred feet, there's a hundred-and-fifty-nine calls for service. And at the project property, there was sixty-six calls within the last eighteen months. So, um, in regards to the conditional use permits...
Were any of those, uh, alarms, we, I know we would get them for a while from some of the businesses, it would be, uh, a false alarm that would, it would bring in a, um, police officer to check out the alarm. So, are that some of those also?
Um, I do have representatives from RCPD that could answer that question for you.
Can we go back to that slide then?
Sure.
Madam Mayor, uh, council members, thank you. Assistant Chief Jeff Sheldon, if I can answer that question very quickly. Um, we don't have that specific, um, crime statistic available right now, but I can certainly get back to you. Um, we just thought we would highlight the crimes that are in the area that would be specific to a, uh, an establishment selling liquor and how that could possibly exasperate, um, these particular crimes for service. But I can get back to you with that information. Um, I, I think, um, anecdotally, the, the, the calls that we've highlighted are the ones that are most important to that central area and related to the, the alcohol sales itself.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
A follow-up to that. Um, was there any study done of the number of call for services at the seven-eleven? I mean, if we're, because essentially, we're talking about the exact same business model about two-hundred feet away that's, is already selling beer and wine and has ga, a gas station.
That's correct, and would essentially be the same data. Um, when we pulled the data for the, um, PCN justification, um, we just used the ABC census tract. Um, so, it, it would all encompass the seven-eleven as well, so those numbers would be very similar.
It's just, well, it would be interesting to compare it to the property subject, that the subject property that we're talking about, our business, where it's sixty-six, and if it's three-hundred at seven-eleven, that gives us a much better understanding of what alcohol sales do to calls for service. If it's seventy-one, that's a whole different question.
Yeah, the comparative number.
Right. So, I mean, to me, there, the, the, the business that they're asking to operate is literally across the street from them. So, if, if they were getting relatively the same number of calls for service and beer and alcohol, or beer and wine didn't change that, that would be a big eye-opener for me. If it did change a lot, that's gonna be a big eye-opener for me, too.
Certainly, and, well, and I think Nick will get into the concentration, and that was also taken into consideration as far as the, um, saturation of, um, type-twenty-type business licenses along with the other ABC liquor licenses. And we considered not only the calls for service, but the saturation in that census tract as well, which...
The, the problem with the data, at least that I'm seeing so far, is if you look at the census tract, most of those are on the eastern, eastern side of, of that census tract. They're all along Zinfandel, we're talking ninety-nine cent store, Chipotle, not really close to this. The only one close to it is the seven-eleven. Uh, when I look, my biggest concern isn't necessarily the bars and restaurants that are nearby, it's where can you pick up a forty or pick up, uh, you know, a can of beer and then go sit out, outside on the sidewalk with your friends, where we don't want loitering, and we don't want people doing that. So, to me comparatively, I, I really need to understand how the seven-eleven has been operating. And again, that, I'm not gonna paint a broad brush that, that the owners of this establishment can't run their, their, their business better than, than next door, but it does help us understand what the neighborhood is necessarily doing with an establishment that's selling beer and wine that they can take with them.
Understood, and we can get you back, we can get you back to with either that, that.
Any other questions for, um...
Thank you.
Lieutenant, thank you. Okay, Nick?
So, as part of the review for the conditional use permit, um, we did speak with RCPD, and they submitted a letter to staff in opposition for the requested off-site alcohol sales. Um, in the letter, it states that it is due to high volume of calls for service and the higher-than-average conversation, concentration of alcohol permits within the area. Uh, staff does support the Ranch Cordova Police Department's letter of opposition and is recommending denial of the CUP. Um, since the PCN is contingent upon the CUP, that staff is also recommending denial of the PCN.
Okay, additional questions for staff?
I, I think it's probably obvious to everybody that the state system, alcohol beverage control, ABC's system of determining whether or not there's an oversaturation in the census tract is a flawed system. We've had a long history here of dealing with that system, couple cases of which went, I guess, through appellate court, trying to deal with ABC's determination and the location about, about a liquor license. I live, um, in an area that requires me to drive by this repeatedly between Highway fifty and, and Folsom Boulevard. I think the business itself is well-run, well-maintained, but the surrounding area is an enormous challenge, as those crime statistics show. And what I have, um, typically seen in an evening is a lot of loitering in the parking lot of this particular business. People sitting around the back and the landscaping, behind the landscaping, not quite sure what the draw is there, but it reminds me of sort of the bad old days of the, of the seven-eleven just down the street, which is, as my colleagues on my right will recall, was, uh, quite a, uh, a crime problem for us, maybe ten years ago. Um, enough so, so that we sort of had a, a big city focus on what do we do about this location? I think, Madam Mayor, at that point, you were advocating classical music being played.
And they did, actually. The, uh, the regional manager for seven-eleven had been a Ranch Cordova resident for a long time. His family was associated with the insurance industry, and, um, they played classical music in the parking lot.
So, the, this is, you know, a challenging location, it's right across the street from mass transit. This is an auto-related use, next-demand transit, mass transit, so that always makes you wonder a little bit. But we also have, you know, quite a density of, uh, lower-income housing, uh, sort of flanking this on one side and not far away on the other side, and a lot of, a lot of foot traffic, a lot of police activity. And so, I think it's a, it's a very challenging place to try to operate this sort of business.
So, did you have any questions for staff?
Uh, I, I appreciate the police department's concerns here, I certainly agree with them. I guess I do have a question, is this remodel contingent upon the PCN and the CUP?
Um, read the letter that was just passed out. Okay, let's open the public hearing and ask if the applicant, um, would like to make a presentation?
So, the answer to my question is yes, it is contingent upon the beer and wine...
That's what they say.
License.
I will remind the council that we have been asked for, uh, PCN letters and liquor licenses for, um, at least two locations further down Mather Field Road, both of which we denied. One for a restaurant and one for a, um, gas station.
I have a quick question for the staff, just if, and David said they probably don't have these numbers, but I would love... Do you have any way of pulling old numbers, um, to show what happened when the seven-eleven went in there?
That, that seven-eleven's been there for a hundred years.
Really?
Well, at least, at least fifty.
Okay.
I mean, when, when there was nothing but seven-eleven and Circle K...
Mm-hmm.
Then... No, don't laugh. Bob says the gentleman who actually built this gas station when it was Shell?
Yeah.
So, Shell was his chief master sergeant at Mather before he retired.
Yeah, he was my chief master sergeant at Mather. And that was in nineteen sixty-four, so...
I knew the guy because he was on the park district board before I was elected.
Can you get those crime statistics for me? I would need that.
They're probably on MicroFich, so it'll take a while.
The county has those downtown, if you wanna look it down.
Okay, so, forgive us.
No.
Sir?
Good evening to everybody. My name is Darshan Singh-Mundi. I'm the friend of the Juhan family. I am, uh, the chair and the president for the Northern California for the businesses association we have. And, uh, I'm an advisory board from last about sixteen years in Sacramento Sheriff. Uh, you, I heard about the police calls and everything. I have multiple locations for the Chevron myself, running from last over thirty years. And, uh, first I'll start with this, seventy percent of the present calls, present calls all over Sacramento, like we discussed in our meetings every month with Sheriff, are, I'm sorry to say, homeless problems. They come, whatever happened, you know, like, they don't want to pay, break in, and lots, lots of problems. Everything, like, you see, I heard council members saying those things. I'm just going to talk now about, uh, alcohol and the reputation of the Chevron. I think maybe some of you know Chevron Company itself, the headquarters in San Ramon, and they're present in California. This is the only oil company is in California. Other companies, they sold you and me, their, all the properties, and they left California. So, only the jobbers, we call them, middle wholesalers, they supply, they, they have the contact and they run. So, Chevron has their own reputation. They have their own stations in this area, forty-three, up to, like, Folsom, Roseville, and all that. So, they have their image, what they do, the difference, like, in Arco and Chevron, we have a supply contact with them for ten years. And this one, the one they're building, is a beautiful building I just saw, and, uh, it's with Extra Mile. Extra Mile is the C-store, that's their own brand, like, Arco, AMPM. So, that's the brand, heavy fast food. They come every month, they do, we call mystery shop. They check inside, we don't know who's coming, no badge, nothing. They check the customer service, bathrooms, cleanliness, uh, outside, inside, all the lot. And we get the report, we get a hundred percent or not. Then they do come and check, uh, the food and the expiry item inside, the second inspection, we don't know who done. We just see these reports on the webpage and the name of the cashier, what time they came in. Then, other one is image inspection. The one is lighting, cleanliness outside, everything, all the image painting, everything. They look at it, even the parking lines and all.
Please wrap up your comments, your three minutes is finished.
Can I have extra time to, just a couple more minutes?
Um, yes, it's, actually, it's all right, because you're representing the owner.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. So, they come and check, and all these things come in the report image and all. And then, all these things, like, if we don't maintain, we don't run any image, like, uh, they Chevron have it all over the west, and we got the dim, and we will not get, uh, the supply contact. They're very strict about the alcohol and tobacco, they don't want, like, we are getting, like, tickets or anything, like, is happening. So, we, ourselves are careful. I think, uh, the deputy can't already send you the copies on the tobacco, because they don't have beer, wine. Like, every time they pass, they check all the IDs and everything. They have other multiple locations also. I know them, they're very good people. I know them, they're very good people, they're very good operators. And Mr. Chohan himself is in our church, our temple. He's a board member, so very nice person, very humble person. So these are all the shops they do and we run very carefully and neatly. And there is a difference in landscaping. I did my facility in the corner of Watt and Ferrocks. Even supervisor, our current supervisor, Susan Peterson, she was very strict about landscaping. Every time she buy the gas over there, she said, I like the landscaping is done over there. So you will see everything is new, it'll be all clean. And this facility, the one I heard you seeing on the back, when all this buildup, it'll be all clean, have more lights nowadays, LED lights will be bright. And we won't see the people sitting and all. It'll be good for the cops to look at it and it'll be safe. Before coming, since I'm an advisory board for the alcohol, I talked to the sergeant about, and she told me that, why don't you come and say the words that way if the council don't know. And that's what I explained to you about Chevron, what we do. We don't want to lose him or myself or anybody else, the supply contact with the Chevron, just for the alcohol or the cigarettes. If we don't, we will lose it. So we run the facility very carefully. He's going to spend like a million plus on this, like everybody, all the investment is more. And we are, we won't be careful, we won't be care less that we don't check the ID. I appreciate you have any question, I will answer. And please approve the beer and wine. So beer and wine is not only the bread and butter. So Chevron itself is the bread and butter. And this is a convenience for the customer. And their customers are, we have majority, 75% customers, like the average are the woman in Chevron. They like cleanliness, clean bathroom. And you see advertisement like the Tecron and all that, they say very good gas. Any question I can answer, but I'll request again, please approve beer and wine. And it will be, you will not get like any disappointment with that. They're very good operators. Thank you.
Are there questions for the gentleman?
I would comment. I know this is difficult for all of us. I would comment that I have actually put Chevron in my automobiles since 1967. And it's always been my primary gasoline station. And I am familiar with the gasoline station, the Chevron station at the northwest corner of Watt and Ferrocks Boulevard. And even though I don't, yes, even though I don't stop there frequently, it is definitely in the appropriate location, if I've been north on the Boulevard, to come back and get gas on the way back to Rancho Cordova. Unfortunately, I will tell you that because of the location of the Chevron stations in Rancho Cordova and different traffic patterns, this is a station that I have been to not constantly, but quite frequently. And I have been in there several times where the place was embarrassing. I'm sorry, I understand your goals, but I've been in there when there was trash everywhere, when the fueling machines were not in good repair, when there was no receipt paper in any of the machines to give a receipt and I had to go inside to ask for a receipt. I've been in there when there were no paper towels in any of the paper towel dispensers and no window washer gadgets to wash your windows. And I actually, I, the last time that happened, I actually complained to whoever was behind the counter. And on the positive side, and I'm sorry, I really, I don't like going in there for that reason. On the positive side, I suspect we would all be very pleased to have you inhabit the vacant lot that's at the rear of the building because that's definitely, is definitely an eyesore. And quite frankly, that's probably what, that's probably the only thing that makes this project actually achievable. Because otherwise, you would be overbuilding. The site is typical of how gas stations were built in this county in the 70s. They're very close to the public streets. They have driveways that are much closer to the intersection than we would ever approve today. And the fact that you are considering using the entire lot is the only thing that keeps this project from being overbuilt. But everyone is very familiar with what's gone on at this particular corner, this particular intersection. And it isn't your fault necessarily, but it is a function of probably some of the lifestyles of the people who live in that general area. And as I said earlier, we have denied similar requests further down towards Mather at least once, and I think twice, once for a convenience store and once for a little restaurant. So while the remodel would be a wonderful thing for this corner, the PCN letter is a heavy lift. So we appreciate your, we appreciate your trying to clean up the property. Bob?
Looking at the pictures you have of the station as it is now and what you plan on doing with it, and what you said about the wine and the beer isn't the main product you have there. It's everything you find in all the others with the fuel and with the food and all that sort of thing. If we were going, we were going to approve this without the beer and wine permit, would that still be enough for you to do the job and redo that Chevron station?
Please come back to the microphone.
I would like to see it as you show it, as it would be in the future, rather than having it like it is now and using the empty lot. And that whole thing looks good. As I said, we have had problems in the past with the beer and wine. And you're right, as far as the homeless and all that sort of thing, it's not just people who live there. But would that be something that you would do anyway, whether you would approve the beer and wine or not?
The beer, wine, Mr. Robert, as just a convenience, give you an example, like Broadway and 19th, I have my own station Chevron. It's a rough area. It's just the last year in Thanksgiving. Like we have a restriction everywhere. So in the morning, my cashier told me, gave me the feedback, one nice dress-up lady before the one-day Thanksgiving came in early, before 6 o'clock. We cannot sell any beer or wine, any alcohol before that time as per the ABC law. She came and asked for the six-pack beer and he said, ma'am, I cannot sell you because of the time coming so many minutes or half an hour, I'll sell you. I mean to say the Chevron have the nice customers and this is the convenience. They come and buy. She was driving very nice car. But if we don't have beer and wine, customer come and suppose beer and wine only, then will not buy anything else. They come in the counter, they suppose hot dog, snacks, soda, water, what sort they buy, don't have beer, they leave and go. So we lose sales, not for the beer itself only, but like other items. That's what the concern is.
So can I ask a follow-up? I just, I want honestly, yes or no? If you don't have a beer license, a beer and wine license, are you still going to do the project?
I, I'm not the owner, I can ask them.
I think that's what he's asking, I just.
Yeah.
Please come, please come forward.
My name is Ikbal Chohan. Just first of all, answer your question. You were mentioning there was a dispenser, other thing, which were about 20 years old. We have replaced it about three months ago. We put the new dispensers as part of the same renovation we were doing. Yes, if you're saying we will go ahead, but it will definitely help us to complete the business.
We appreciate knowing that you would go ahead with the project.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you both very much, gentlemen. Additional questions? Further comments?
I would just say that.
Let's, let's close the public, can anybody else come to speak to this item? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing.
So I would just say, I'm definitely in support of the project. I don't feel like I have enough information to make the decision right now. I don't think I'm, at this point, I am not opposed to the PNC letter, PCN letter, excuse me. Because I just, I just don't know what the other operators are doing. I, I'm surprised, I know I wasn't here when you guys, when the council denied one for a restaurant. To me, again, I think depending on the restaurant, that is completely different scenario.
It was a small sandwich shop.
Okay, so.
It wasn't a whole restaurant.
Yeah, well, I mean, even then, like, something that you're consuming on site, I think is completely different than this use or 7-Eleven that's selling the same thing. That could contribute to some of the issues that we've had in the surrounding neighborhoods. But without knowing whether or not that other establishment is driving that problem, because the interesting thing to me is if I look at that as the use, I don't, I'm not convinced there's an oversaturation of that there. I'd also like to know, a little bit further away, how many more convenience stores/liquor stores? Because if I just think, behind Rosie's, if I'm looking at this right, if you go east down Folsom Boulevard.
Yes, it does.
How far, do you run into a handful more of these types of uses? Because again, looking at the census tract is a terrible way for us to evaluate that because most of those sales are much, I mean, what, two miles away to the east? A mile and a half at least, maybe?
Well, the closer thing is just across the freeway where there are several.
Right, Sunny's is across the highway.
There's a gas station.
Mm-hmm, another 7-Eleven.
I don't think that, I don't think the mobile sells.
I think so.
Alcohol. I don't know if they do.
It's a gas station.
And I would also like to understand if the applicant operates any other ones with beer and wine? Because I'm seeing testimonials about how they act around cigarette sales, which I think is fantastic to see information like this. But again, without additional information, I, there's no way I would vote in favor today for that. But, I mean, this is our only opportunity to weigh in on it, right?
Well, unless we, unless we continue it to a future agenda.
I mean, can we approve this project and still hold that denial letter for the PCN till later? Or is that contingent all in this vote?
So the way staff did it is we did two resolutions. One resolution is for the designer view and the conditional use permit for the service station. And then the other resolution is a separate resolution for the CUP for alcohol sales. And it's recommending denial and the PCN. So if I'm not mistaken, I believe you can approve the one resolution for the designer view and.
Could we continue the second one?
We could continue the second one. The other opportunity, I mean, we, number one, we could continue the whole thing. Number two, we could approve, we could bifurcate it and approve one of the resolutions or the, simply the environmental determination and then the resolution for the use, the use permit for the gas station and the car wash. And then continue the resolution for the, the CUP for the alcohol.
Okay.
Or we could simply deny the alcohol sales, approve the other two aspects. And then they could come back at a future date and, you know, give them some time to do the construction, get open, see how the store is managed, see what the call volume is. And then they could come back and apply for the use permit for, for that and the PCN letter.
So let me ask our city attorney a question. Because that's who I was talking to. In this case, because of the, because of the density of, or the number of licenses within this census tract is why we're becoming somehow the determining body? Because in a lot of instances, we send a letter in opposition and it falls on deaf ears and they never even listen to us. Is the reason that we have the power here today is because we're issuing the building permit?
It's because it's oversaturated.
Right.
Because ABC considers it to be oversaturated.
Correct.
Okay.
They make, they have the final decision. And if they, well, like the 99 cent store, we said no and they said yes and that was the way it was, so.
Right, no, which, in my history here, every, nearly every time we've said no, they didn't listen. I'm just trying to understand, and this is the first time it's come to us and it's coming to us with a building permit attached to it. I want to understand that those aren't combined. And I'd really like to have the city attorney.
Respectfully, Donald, that's not accurate. We don't get ignored, not anymore.
Well, since I've been here, I don't recall a time that we opposed one that where they didn't get it. But again, I'd like the city attorney to answer my question.
My understanding is because this is an oversaturating, saturated situation and I do think staff has set it up so that you could bifurcate the two actions.
So my suggestion at this time is to move the staff's recommendation for the, for the building permit items and to continue the PCN conversation to a later date. And I will also just warn the applicants now, my, my leaning today would be to deny you. If you can prove to me that it's not going to be an issue or that the surrounding businesses are not contributing to this issue. But if you've got 66 calls for service and 7-Eleven has 200, that's not something I'm going to entertain. And then I'd also like to understand if you have additional establishments in other places that are selling beer and wine, we need to see those statistics too. And again, I don't think we need to get into that discussion today. Let's get all of the data back together and see if it's something that we can even entertain. But I, I mean, at this point, I would be leaning towards denying you unless somebody can prove to me otherwise.
So you would, you would be asking RCPD to provide the stats for calls at the 7-Eleven?
And any other establishments in the county that they operate? Is this the only, you have another one? Okay. Two more, within our city?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so they have a couple more.
Luckily, he can pull that too because that's the shares. So that would, that would be my, my motion is to, is to approve the staff's recommendation for the building permits and design review and to continue the PCN conversation to a later date.
Okay, so let's just be clear though. First of all, we're approving the environmental exemption.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
But, no, that's okay. But the, the resolution that you want to approve is for the minor design review and the CUP for the gas station.
Yeah, items one and two. Items one and two, continue item three.
Correct.
Okay.
So we have that motion, is there a second?
And just to be specific about the packet, if we could, staff, the resolution they're denying is attachment number four?
Okay.
Is that just to be, for clarification?
Well, there's probably a resolution number that we should be using.
From what I'm reading on the agenda, there are three items with recommendations. There's a determination that the project is exempt from SEQA, adopt the minor design review, and then there's adopt a resolution denying a CUP. So I'm saying continue item three and pass the other two.
Nick, oh, here we go.
Unless my.
Nick, you all didn't include resolution numbers the way you normally do.
That's why I referred to the attachments.
Yeah.
So are there three or four?
It would be an attachment, it would be, attachment number four, which would be continued for the conditional use permit for alcohol sales.
Okay.
So we're waiting for more information from the police, from ABC, from?
Both.
Police and from the.
And the applicant.
So just to clarify, you're looking for more information on perhaps how the 7-Eleven has calls for service from our. has calls for service from our police department?
Calls for service from the 7-Eleven look further than 1,000 feet from this establishment, look at 2,000, 3,000, 4,000 feet away, number of establishments that are selling, and what are their calls for service?
Okay.
And then also, calls for service at their other similar businesses that the applicant owns.
Adam, is that specific enough? Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Stacy, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, so that motion carries, gentlemen. So, thank you very much for trying to clean up this corner in Rancho Cordova. We really appreciate your help, and expanding the presence of Chevron in a modern way in our jurisdictions. Thank you very much.
A comment to staff, you know, the better graphic for these PCNs, I understand the legality of the census tract, but that's stupid geography. A better way to look at this would be, here's the corridor, here's the major corridors. Where else on these corridors is there a PCN?
Yeah.
That would answer Donald's question, because I could tell you, you know, it's basically every block, there's one or two on Folsom Boulevard, but seeing that graphically would probably be the best way to make that sort of determination.
Yeah, and I, hopefully through this exercise, we can come up with a better, a better way to attack these in the future, as we get them, because you're right, I think most times, it's always been very clear that there are too many of them, and they're right there. And this is a case where it's not really right there, it's in other places. But just outside of the census tract could be a lot of things that we're just not looking at. So, hopefully we can come up with a standard through this exercise that also gives some predictability to applicants, that, yeah, ABC's saying that, but, you know, it's also two miles long, and the Chipotle's not really contributing the same issues to that neighborhood that the 7-Eleven is. If it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Our regular calendar item, 12.1. Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and community. This is a routine item for appointment of labor negotiators that is the prerequisite to adjourning into closed session for a conference with labor negotiators on these topics. The staff recommendation is that the council appoint the two designated labor negotiators, the mayor and myself, for that purpose. And with the motion on that item, we would be free to adjourn for a closed session on this item.
Okay, is there any, are there any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Subpo.
Second.
Thank you. Stacy Caldwell.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. Motion carries. Council requests for future agenda items. We assume that's everybody? Okay, so then we're going to adjourn to closed session in the community boardroom. And Stacy, do you want to read the topic of the closed session?
The closed session is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957 dash, sorry, 54957 dot six. Agency designated representatives, Mayor Linda Budge and Adam Langren, unrepresented employee city manager.
Thank you. Adam, do we anticipate a report from closed session?
What do we do, ma'am?
Okay, so, with that, we will adjourn until Adam comes out to make a report. Two minutes, please. We want to welcome everyone to today's meeting, regular meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council, and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Here.
Mayor Budge.
Here. Stacy, would you read the TV playback announcement, please?
This meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Wednesday, October 18th, at 9:00 a.m., and Monday, October 22nd, at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Stacy. And we do that because we want to also welcome all of the people who will be watching on cable or on the internet, and we want to let everyone know that there is an opportunity for public comment tonight, and we have speaker cards at the back of the room, so anybody who wants to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda can fill out a speaker card and turn it into the city clerk. We're going to begin our meeting, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance and with an invocation. Tonight's invocation is being brought by some very special people, the principal at St. John Vianney, Ms. Amy Hale, and the student government president, Charles Sander, from St. John Vianney. And, excuse me, so after our Pledge of Allegiance, we would invite you to remain standing for the invocation. Our Pledge of Allegiance tonight is going to be led by Dr. Sarah Coligan, who is our superintendent at Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. So if we'll all stand.
Please join me in honoring our flag. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, God of the inner light, come to us this evening, enlighten our minds, that our lives may rise to you in the act of praise of this evening's duties. Lord, bless this time of togetherness. May your light stream forth into the work before us, so that we may truly see you in all that we do. May all things work together for good. May all that is discussed be blessed. Allow us the grace to make your light known to the Rancho Cordova community. A reading from Mark, chapter four, verses 30 through 32. He said, "To what shall we compare the kingdom of God, or what parable can we use for it? It is like a mustard seed, that when sown in the ground is the smallest of all the seeds on earth. For once it is sown, it springs up and becomes the largest of plants, and puts forth large branches, so that the birds of the sky can dwell in its shade."
A prayer for the long view. It helps now and then to step back and take a long view. The kingdom is not only beyond our efforts, it is even beyond our vision. We accomplish in our lifetime only a thin fraction of the magnificent enterprise that is God's work. Nothing we do is complete, which is a way of saying that the kingdom always lies beyond us. No statement says all that could be said. No prayer fully expresses our faith. No confession brings perfection. No pastoral visit brings wholeness, and no program accomplishes the church's mission. No set of goals and objectives includes everything. It may be incomplete, but it is a beginning, a step along the way, an opportunity for the Lord's grace to enter and do the rest. We may never see the end results, but that is the difference between the master builder and the worker. We are the workers, not master builders, ministers, or messias. We are prophets of a future not our own. That is what we are about. We plant the seeds that one day will grow. We water seeds already planted, knowing that they hold future promise. We lay foundations that will need further development. We provide yeast that produces far beyond our capabilities. We cannot do everything, and there is a sense of liberation in realizing that. This enables us to do something, and to do it very well. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
to you in the act of praise of this evening's duties. Lord, bless this time of togetherness. May your light stream forth into the work before us, so that we may truly see you in all that we do. May all things work together for good. May all that is discussed be blessed. Allow us the grace to make your light known to the Rancho Cordova community. A reading from Mark, chapter four, verses 30 through 32. He said, "To what shall we compare the kingdom of God, or what parable can we use for it? It is like a mustard seed, that when sown in the ground is the smallest of all the seeds on earth. For once it is sown, it springs up and becomes the largest of plants, and puts forth large branches, so that the birds of the sky can dwell in its shade."
A prayer for the long view. It helps now and then to step back and take a long view. The kingdom is not only beyond our efforts, it is even beyond our vision. We accomplish in our lifetime only a thin fraction of the magnificent enterprise that is God's work. Nothing we do is complete, which is a way of saying that the kingdom always lies beyond us. No statement says all that could be said. No prayer fully expresses our faith. No confession brings perfection. No pastoral visit brings wholeness. And no program accomplishes the church's mission. No set of goals and objectives includes everything. It may be incomplete, but it is a beginning, a step along the way, an opportunity for the Lord's grace to enter and do the rest. We may never see the end results, but that is the difference between the master builder and the worker. We are the workers, not master builders, ministers, or messias. We are prophets of a future not our own. That is what we are about. We plant the seeds that one day will grow. We water seeds already planted, knowing that they hold future promise. We lay foundations that will need further development. We provide yeast that produces far beyond our capabilities. We cannot do everything, and there is a sense of liberation in realizing that. This enables us to do something and to do it very well. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you both. Please be seated. I would only comment that in Rancho Cordova, we have always tried to ensure that our city will be as good to live in, in 100 years as it is today. Taking that long view can be a very important, a very important talent to learn. Thank you very much. We will now have presentations, and we're going to reorder our presentations a little bit. And my colleague David is going to recognize Dade Kate as one of the Sacramento County Sustainable Business Awards.
This is on? It is? And you must be Ed.
I am Ed.
Ed LaFrance.
Got my name on it.
All right. Well, I have a proclamation here that is honoring Dade Kate Inc. for the 2018 Sustainable Business of the Year. I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Rancho Cordova is honored to recognize Dade Kate as a recent recipient of the 2018 Sustainable Business of the Year, hosted by the Sacramento Area Sustainable Business Program. And whereas Dade Kate is a full-service technology partner dedicated to providing secure, reliable, high-available internet solutions, I think most of us could use those, to clients with excellent service and support located within Rancho Cordova, California. And whereas by a dedicated team of professionals that understand what it means to build, maintain, and employ comprehensive internet solutions. And whereas Dade Kate replaced all fluorescent tube lighting in office spaces and in the data center suite with LED-based drop-in replacements, resulting in an immediate 46% reduction in energy consumption for lighting. And whereas Dade Kate is currently engaged in replacing all wall switch lighting controls in its office and data center suite with automatic sensors to create lighted pathways with auto shut-off, further reducing power usage for lighting. And whereas Dade Kate replaced spindle drive technology in its client data storage arrays with highly efficient SSD storage technology. And now, therefore be it resolved, the city council of the city of Rancho Cordova expresses its sincere appreciation to Dade Kate for being a top performer in our community and for implementing outstanding achievements in energy conservation. And witness thereof, our mayor has signed her signature and affixed a seal for this proclamation. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And if you want to tell us a little bit about Dade Kate and about your sustainability efforts, that would be great.
All these mics are hot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right between them, you're fine.
Thank you very much for this proclamation, it's very much appreciated. Thank you to city management, city council for this. Very detailed, there's a lot of things on here that we did. I think one thing that we did, I'd like to mention that is not on here, is we worked in conjunction with SMUD. This was about a year or so ago. And we replaced, for the, for the most part, replaced our powered air conditioning with a passive type of air conditioning that's highly efficient and uses 90% less power than conventional crack or cooling and, you know, powered compressor air conditioning. For a data center, that's a big deal, because as you can imagine, with all those servers putting off a lot of heat in a one big room, we use a lot of air conditioning. So, that's saving many hundreds of kilowatts of air conditioning power month after month. And that was just one of the things we did. Green, being green is not just smart for the environment, it's good for your bottom line, too. So, we consider it a win-win all around. And really, again, I want to thank everyone for this honor.